Good evening. Councilmember Toby Gilli has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mayor. And after the prayer, we'll ask Boy Scout Troop 1108 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would bow your heads, please. Dear God, our most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've given us, and we thank you for this wonderful city in which we live. Since we come here tonight to make decisions for our community, give us a measure of your wisdom to do what is right for our community. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, July 28, 2011. And as you have seen on the screen, we have members of Troop 1108 from St. Paul's Episcopal Church, a Boy Scout troop, including, and if you want to, I'll ask you to stand up when I call your name, okay? And remain standing until I get everybody's name called. Anderson Keithley, Jake Arning, John David Blankenship, Ethan Rush, John Albritton, and David Kirkham is the long-suffering scout mascot. We're very pleased to have you all here, and you're welcome to stay as long as you wish tonight, but we're very proud that you're here, and we look forward to seeing you again. Maybe you'll run for a city council someday, okay?
Thank you for having us.
All right, we're glad to have you here. Thanks a lot. You may be seated. Councilmembers, you have before you your consent agenda, but before we get to that, I would like to make notice that we did have an excellent turnout at our planning meeting for our bicentennial year and for our bicentennial events. And we had ninety-plus folks at Patterson Center, and I want to say thank you to each one of those who did turn out for that meeting. We will have a number of other meetings, but if you are interested in working with any of those bicentennial committees, we have a theme for every month for thirteen months, starting this October and ending in October 2012. But if you're interested in serving with any of those committee members on those theme months to help us make our bicentennial the best and to enhance it with your service, if you will look on the city's website at MurfreesboroTN.gov, you will find our Parks and Recreation Department and a way to link up with them to talk about our bicentennial, see when the next meeting of each of the month's themes is going to be, and kind of get some preliminary information about our bicentennial. So I hope that you would do that, and I certainly appreciate everyone who would, who was there at our meeting, and those of you who wish to join in, we're certainly ready to accept you and would love to have you help us participate. Also, if you don't have the webpage, you can call my office, 849-2629, and we'll give you that information then. Councilmembers, you have your consent agenda before you. If you have questions regarding the consent agenda, now's a good time to bring those up, and if there are no questions, I will accept a motion that we accept our consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion second. Please call the role Mr. Crumley.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area north of Kimbrough Road and west of Barfield Road to single-family residential 10, RS 10, and single-family residential 12, RS 12 districts.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the role Mr. Crumley.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for passage on second reading again, an ordinance rezoning property along Memorial Boulevard at Kings Ridge Drive to Highway Commercial CH District.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Young.
I'd like to get a clarification on some things between the CH and this from the planning director, if I could. Is that... May I ask him some questions?
I believe you can. Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
You can do that. Mr. Adelot, if you'd approach, welcome.
Good evening. How can I help you?
I want you to explain the difference between commercial highway and commercial fringe, commercial local, and how they apply to this particular proposed rezoning.
Okay, the application was for commercial highway. The commercial highway is the city's more intense pure commercial zone. It's not a manufacturing zone. It is a commercial district. It was an original zone that came with us when we adopted our 1984 zoning ordinance, and it was part of the regulations. Actually, it's changed very, very little since the original adoption in 1984. Commercial highway is a commercial classification that is typical of our major arteries. It's intended to allow development that would be along the major roadways in our community. It's expected that there may be buffering zones that may be placed between it and lower intensity districts. For instance, sometimes we have designed zoning patterns whereby we place a multifamily or a lower-intensity commercial between a commercial highway district and a single-family subdivision. The commercial local district is the other extreme. The commercial local is a pure neighborhood district. It's intended to be of a smaller scale, and it allows a much narrower number of uses. It also allows residential uses. The commercial local district is the city's least intense pure commercial district. It also allows quadruplexes and duplexes, very similar to the office general district. We have placed it as the zone that would be placed on property as a default zone when we annex land that's zoned commercial in the county. It will come into the city automatically zoned commercial local if it's already zoned commercial in the county as just an exercise of the zone ordinance. Typically, we don't keep them in that district very long if there is any development intentions. A good example of a commercial local zone is the area at Bradyville Pike and Minerva Drive, a very narrow number of commercial uses. It does not allow something like a grocery store, so that's been a little bit of a problem in some respects. The commercial fringe district, we developed it in 1992. What we saw was a need for a commercial district where we had single-family or duplex residential immediately adjacent to commercial areas. The area where we began with that was the area at Highway 96 and Rutherford Boulevard, where we had a commercial area where we had the idea that a grocery store would be a good use, and this is the west side of Highway 96. But it backed up to single-family property that had no development potential, and we were concerned that we couldn't place an intervening lower-intensity zone in between it and the commercial area and the residential area. So we developed the commercial fringe, which was intended to be at the edge of commercial areas, the fringe of commercial areas, as they went into residential areas. The commercial highway zone in the city's zone ordinance, and I did a little bit of counting this afternoon, we list about 264 uses as listed uses in chart one of our zone ordinance. The commercial highway allows 157 uses. Most of them are just commercial uses, although some of them are institutional uses. The commercial fringe district allows 108, so that's 49 fewer uses are permitted in the commercial fringe district. In terms of bulk regulations, the commercial fringe district is identical to the commercial highway in all respects in terms of setbacks, except for two things. One, the commercial highway allows a maximum height of 75 foot and allows a 10-foot side setback adjacent to residential uses. The commercial fringe allows a 45-foot maximum height, so it'd be 30 foot lower, and requires that if it shares a common lot line with a property zone for single-family purposes, it would require a 25-foot setback. Some of the uses that are not allowed in the commercial fringe but are allowed in the commercial highway would include automotive repair, automotive sales and services, hotels and motels, contractor storage. That's typical, those are some of the more intense, to give you an idea of the things that would cut out of the commercial highway district to create the commercial fringe. I brought a longer and more detailed list, if you want me to read into it. I also brought a map, if you wanted to see it, I can put it on the overhead projector that shows where the commercial fringe districts are in our city. We have about eight major commercial fringe districts that we've created, one of them being at the intersection with Highway 96 and Rutherford Boulevard, that would be where the food line is located. Another one being on East Norfield Boulevard where North Tennessee Boulevard intersects, there's a little commercial area, it's got a little video store, you may be familiar with it. That's commercial fringe, and notice it's right adjacent to single-family subdivisions. We have another one at the intersection of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road. There's a little market there, and there's a dollar store that's fixed to be developed there. And originally, a portion of that was zoned as a planned development, but later on, we went back and changed the zone for it. We have another one at the intersection of St. Andrews Drive and Salem Highway. There's a grocery store at that location, that'd be a buy-low, and another zone at the intersection of Casey Lane and Salem Highway. We have some on South Church Street in front of the Savannah Ridge subdivision out there. There's a little office and veterinarian right there across from, but not including the food line on South Church Street. So those are about where the major ones are. We've got a couple of other very small ones around.
Now, one other, may I?
Certainly.
The proposed gateway design overlay that the applicant is proposing to this, is this going to lessen the commercial highway effect, or is it going to strengthen the amenities of the effect? How does that play into this?
All right, well, let me clarify what the applicant's considering. The applicant, even throughout this week, has had his attorney work in to draft and finalize the restrictive covenants that he voluntarily has placed on his property. The restrictions will, in terms of the landscaping requirements, in terms of the building material requirements, in terms of the building requirements for both the multifamily and the commercial portion, will mimic the gateway design overlay districts in terms of standards. In terms of process, it will be very different. The process for gateway overlay requires that there be pre-designed meetings with the planning commission or planning staff, and an initial design review and final design review. That won't be included. We're still going to be doing the things that we always do in terms of sitting down with architects, but that's not including the restrictions. But what is included will be the same landscaping requirements, the same landscaping requirements that are required in front of the avenues, in terms of the additional width of landscaping, the additional planning materials that would be required. It will also place a limit of 45-foot height as a maximum height upon all of the property. So that's very similar to the commercial fringe district. The restrictions will also place some additional requirements in terms of design for parking areas, so that there's more landscape islands in the parking areas. Again, the very same standards that are in the zoning ordinance that apply to property in the gateway overlay district. And yes, it will increase the, I guess, will be more demanding than the commercial highway would be without these restrictions. I'll also add that there are certain uses that are excluded, that are just right off the top are excluded, just like in the gateway. You may be familiar that we do not allow carnivals, we don't allow fireworks sales, we don't allow temporary vendors in the gateway overlay district. The same standard in terms of uses permitted are also being cut out.
The two parcels next to these parcels on both sides of Memorial are already zoned commercial highway.
To the north, the property is zoned commercial highway, yes, sir. And to the south, a portion of it is actually zoned commercial local, where the little Serpice is, but then where the nursing home is, is zoned commercial highway.
Okay. Will, as that develops without guidelines, be less restrictive than this under the guidelines? The two commercial properties on each side of this, developing as already zoned commercial highway, will have much more availability to do different things than this with the overlay, not overlay, the design guidelines put to it? And an example, you just mentioned the 45-foot height requirement.
Yes, sir, they will be. They do not have the same landscaping requirements that these restrictions will require. They will not have the same height limitations that these restrictions will require.
And that's already done? Those are already zoned commercial highway?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Ms. Harris.
Mayor and councilmembers, I guess my question maybe should be addressed to maybe Mr. Murphy, one of the Murphy, because I think you all talked about what I'm getting ready to ask, so maybe you can answer this question. Based on the emails I've received, several phone calls, I've been personally talking to a lot of the people in the area, I was wondering would the Haines family agree to, since you all are representing them, to change this from commercial highway to commercial fringe?
Let me try and answer that question, and let me sort of repeat what Mr. Adelot said. We do have commercial highway on both sides of this track. We have this week been drafting some 35 pages of restrictive covenants to go on our track, which is between commercial highway. Now, as I understand, the commercial fringe district, it's generally thought to apply to commercial that joins single-family, and in this case, we were very, very careful to have a buffer between our requested commercial and the single-family. So we have multifamily all around the commercial between us and the single-family, which is, we think, a considerable buffer, considering the fact that we also have 36 pages of restrictions that I don't think you could ask Mr. Adelot, any commercial highway in our city has. But the Haines have told me if the council as a group feels like, you know, this should be commercial fringe, they'll defer to the council's wisdom, but their preference is for it to be commercial highway, and in my way of thinking, that's what it should be because there is a substantial buffer. And I think typically where you see commercial fringe, it's right smack on top of single-family.
Mr. Gilli.
Mr. Adelot, let me ask you this question. With the restrictions that are being proposed for this property, if you and your minds eye can look up and down Memorial as it stands now, from, say, the intersection with Broad up to where this property is, is there a single piece of commercial developed property that would actually be able to be rebuilt just as it is within these restrictions on that property?
Pardon me, do you mean the...
Right, look at the businesses that are up and down Memorial right now. If you wanted to take one of those and transplant it onto this property, that really couldn't be done with the restrictions, is what I'm getting at. That's how tight.
Well, there's a couple that could be. There's a couple that could be, except for its massive size. State Farm, in terms of its landscaping and good looks, would be, could almost do it, could almost do it. But the size limitations, they're also on these restrictions, placing a maximum size for buildings. So, and besides, this parcel could never accommodate a building of that size. The First Bank, not the First Bank, but the Wilson Bank, just down the road, in terms of the landscaping, could very closely meet it. The building, actually, the building would be a little bit hard-pressed. It's got an awful lot of ethos on it. While you drive by it, first you think you saw 100% masonry building. The Wilson Bank is an attractive building, but it has more ethos on it than would be permitted by these restrictions, so it would be just about disqualified. In terms of building materials, the First Bank at the corner of Brinkley Road and Memorial, almost downtown, it could almost meet these restrictions. It's just a little, it's right at 40 foot tall, so it can meet the height limitations, and it's a masonry building, it's a good-looking building. So there's some buildings that could almost do it. The thing that usually catches them will be the landscaping. The restrictions that they'd be placing on the property will, along Memorial, will require 35, excuse me, 25-foot landscaping, whereas most buildings have been built with a 10-foot landscape strip. There will also be a separation from the building, a required, if it's more than two acres, that there be 10-foot separation from the building to the parking lot, and that there be a separation of 15-foot from the parking lot to the property line, which, that's just almost unheard of in most developments in our city.
My guess is there's better than 100 commercial parcels up and down Memorial from what I just, the area we're talking about.
Oh, yes, sir.
And of those, you're able to name three that almost might fit within the restrictions.
That's correct.
I'm just trying to give an example, put in perspective what we're looking at.
And I think another one that comes up would be, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, the Adams Place probably could. Adams Place is a good example of a good example. It would meet gateway design overlay district requirements.
Thinking out into our community where we do have commercial fringe property without restrictions like this, can you give me any examples of anything that would fit on this property within those restrictions that are being proposed?
Yes, sir. The new subway that Mr. Preideep has built on Las Cassas Highway, he could meet it in terms of building appearance, but not in terms of the required landscaping. He doesn't meet, he doesn't meet the landscaping requirement under these restrictions. He meets the standards on it, and he is zoned commercial fringe. A very attractive building, though. I'll give him kudos for that, because he's upgraded his appearance. It's the same building he built on Medical Center Parkway. Very attractive, very attractive building. But the landscaping is not quite as heavy as these restrictions would require. Now, beyond that, I'm beginning, there's a bank, there's a bank right there in front of the food line, that's a pretty good-looking building. The building probably would be able to make it, but the landscaping, again, would be disqualified. It's going to be the landscaping that gets it most, because a 25-foot landscaping along Memorial is going to be what gets them.
The point I'm getting at is that whether this is classified as commercial highway or commercial fringe, the real teeth to this, the real protection, is in the restrictive covenants that are being voluntarily offered that's going to make the quality of this development better than... You're listing out a handful of what we consider some of our better-looking buildings, and the word "almost" still keeps coming up with them.
Yes, sir. There's no doubt in my mind that the restrictive covenants that they're agreeing to place will make a big difference in the long-term quality of the development on that property.
Okay. And also, the size of the parcels that is zoned commercial with the additional restrictions and landscape requirements, that would limit a lot of the uses that you see in the commercial highway zone, wouldn't it, would it not?
Yes, sir, it will. The location will not lend itself well to some uses. For instance, the property is a total of eight acres, and it will, it's got a longer, it's got a greater width than it does depth. The depth is only about 300, almost 350 foot deep, which is going to create the opportunity to create parcels that front on Memorial with a backage road. The backage road is going to be very important for the future traffic movements, because that will allow these commercial parcels to have access to a traffic, a potentially signalized intersection at Kings Ridge, and that's going to be very important. The depth was designed to allow that opportunity and still allow them to meet landscaping requirements under these restrictions. And in fact, the depth of this commercial is greater than your typical commercial lots, and is much greater than the lots that front the avenues, for instance. And they've got that sort of a backage road like that as well.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Adelot?
I have one question.
Yes.
Mr. Adelot, we have the restrictions, and I think that's a fantastic way to monitor the property, but several of the emails that I had received over the last two or three days were asking the question, the Haines sell the property, we have 36 pages of restrictions, what is our best way as a city that we will monitor? I know we don't monitor restrictive covenants, that's, we can't do that, but if we have, we all have voted on first reading of passing this, what happens if someone comes in and their intent on what we are all sitting up here talking about, the restrictive covenants, goes against what the Haines have on their restrictive covenants? What's the teeth and what's the enforcement on being able to enforce that?
Well, as I tried to make it clear throughout the discussions with the neighborhood, the city would not be in a position to enforce them. We're not going to be party to those restrictions in the sense that we're a property owner and have standing to enforce them. Of course, there's a couple of things. Don't underestimate the, well, maybe it's good to underestimate it, but be aware of that there is the institution. The Haines have dealt with the council and the public and my office in good faith on this, and if they were to reneg, that would be chaos there.
Well, I'm not worried about, I'm not insinuating the Haines, but when I'm insinuating you say the property changes hands, a site plan comes to you that's not within this intent, could the planning commission turn that down based upon...
No, sir. No, sir. We will not be able to deny or grant approval based upon these restrictions. We must enforce our zone ordinance the way it is written. I will assure you, though, that if I see something coming to my office that's different than what I've been led to believe, I will be on the phone with Mr. Haines and then Mr. Murphy and saying, how's this coming about? I will be very bold in making that demand. How's this coming about?
Because these restrictions will be, these restrictions will be deed restrictions that are recorded on the property.
Yes, sir. And in fact, well, I think Mr. Murphy, he just touched me on, but I think he's anxious to tell you about the length of time in which the Haines will have standing to enforce them, even after they have sold the property. They are writing in a provision that's going to allow them a lengthy time in which, even after they've sold the property, they'll have the ability to enforce them. There's a period in which they cannot be amended without them having consent. But I'd rather Mr. Murphy speak on the specifics of that rather than me, because I read through it earlier this week, and actually discussed it with our assistant city attorney, but I'm not the authority on that provision. I'd defer to Mr. Murphy, if you want to hear more about that part.
Mr. Gilli.
A couple of things. My understanding is that, first, the restrictive covenants, it's been agreed that they will be recorded prior to third reading, so it's not a matter of the zoning being put in place and then someone else buying the property and saying, well, we're just not going to record those. That's not going to be the situation.
And in fact, they have assured me that if they have not recorded them prior to third and final reading, that they will ask for a deferral until they have that opportunity.
Second, once they're recorded, those restrictive covenants, deed restrictions, will run with the land to any subsequent purchaser, that's against them. And third, I think a good example, and I may be wrong about this, but isn't this the same mechanism that Mr. Ojeno had used on property out on the corner of Salem and Casey Lane as to his property, was restrictive covenants as opposed to part of the zoning and that, and giving himself the right to be able to enforce those restrictive covenants on some of the development that was the Ojeno farm?
Yes, sir, he did, and he did enforce them.
And that worked out just fine the way that it was supposed to. I think that it did.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have another question.
Yes, Ms. Harris.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'm sure all of us have been getting probably the same emails, and I know we're to be a voice for the people, and we want the people to speak. And I may be incorrect, but seemingly, the people in the area, the majority, vast majority, are against the commercial highway, and as for, in my emails and face-to-face contact and phone calls, that we kind of meet and change this to fringe, would it be so terrible if we do that? I mean, can we just not do that?
Does that have to go back through the planning commission?
No, sir, it would not.
Would it require... Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir, I would.
All right. You have a make motion to second reading to change to commercial fringe. Is there a second? Not hearing a second, the motion fails for the lack of a second. You still have this on second reading.
Mayor, let me say, you know, I appreciate what she's saying, and I got those same emails as well, and we just heard numerous explanations of, if we went back to commercial fringe, I think we would go back to a pure commercial fringe, and we would lose a lot of the...
would lose a lot of the amenities and benefits. They're not going to go back to Commercial Fringe and then keep their same restrictive covenants on the property. I wouldn't think that would be part of the deal. It would go back to Commercial Fringe as Commercial Fringe is in the ordinance, which would, it wouldn't be the Gateway Overlay District, or it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any of that stuff. It's not, it's not a good deal when you, when you look at the, what you have on the table versus Commercial Fringe. A pure Commercial Fringe would be, I think, a less, it would be a less desirable zoning than what's on the table. That's my opinion.
Other questions, comments?
Mr. Adelot, I have one question. What would be the setback? And you were talking about setbacks, but on Memorial Boulevard or Memorial Drive, what would be the setback on Commercial Fringe?
The standard setback would be 42-foot for the building. The landscaping, if the lot is more than two acres, would be a 10-foot landscape strip. Excuse me, if it were more than five acres, it would be a 10-foot landscape strip. If it were less than 10, but more than two, it would be an eight-foot. If it's less than two, it would be a five-foot landscape strip under the standard Commercial Fringe.
So, and I think that's one point that we're saying a 35-foot landscape strip.
25-foot would be required.
25-foot landscape strip would be required, but if it was a smaller parcel, it could be as little as an eight-foot strip.
Right.
With Commercial Fringe.
That's right. Or even five-foot if it's a very, very small parcel.
Five times. I mean, that's huge. I mean, that's.
Other questions or comments?
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Mr. Young, Mr. Gilli, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding this motion on second reading? Mr. Crumley, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
No.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone property along Memorial Boulevard and Kings Ri, at Kings Ridge Drive to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
Move for passage on second reading. Second.
All right. Mr. Gilli, Mr. Young, thank you very much. Are there questions or comments before I ask them to call the roll? If not, please call the roll. Mr. Crumley.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
No.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider for passage now on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along South Rutherford Boulevard to residential multifamily 12, RM 12 District.
Mayor, if I may ask?
Mr. Gilli.
Mr. Brick-Murphy, how is, discussions are coming with the residents in that area from last time that we were together?
Councilman Gilli.
Your discussions with some of the residents in this area regarding some of the restrictive covenants that were, can you give me, give me an update on that?
We, I've drafted a set of restrictions, and we're in the process of getting those in, in final format. We'll have them recorded before the, the third and final reading. I believe, I will also send a copy to Ms. Davy, the neighbor, who's been our neighbor who's been most involved, and if she can comment on those before they're recorded as well, I'd be happy to do that.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. On second reading, you have this ordinance.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider recommendations of the disciplinary review board with regards to amendments to the rules of procedure. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor Bragg, members of the council. The disciplinary review board had one of its regular meetings recently and decided to recommend to you a change in its rules of procedure. As you recall, those are the rules you approve and adopt that they follow in considering hearings if a discharged employee wishes to challenge his or her discharge. The cover letter that was sent to you has the proposed definition as well as the existing definition. The primary purpose of the change is to make clear that the disciplinary review board does not have an obligation and the employee does not have a right to a hearing when the termination of employment is not based on a disciplinary reason, such as the layoffs that we had to have a year before, if someone has been out and unwell and unable to return to work. That's a decision to terminate that is not based on any wrongdoing by the employee where there are contested facts of whether that's the appropriate discipline. So that is the recommendation. It was brought to the board, excuse me, because of a case that's referenced in the cover letter. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the recommendation or the options that were considered by the board.
Any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this recommendation?
Move for approval. Second.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll, Mr. Crumley.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Human Resources Director with regards to an engagement letter for annual actuarial services for the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee Employee's Revised Pension Plan. Mr. Godwin, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the city council. Included in your packet this evening is a memorandum recommending the approval that the city utilized the services of Brian Pendleton Swatton McAllister. It specifically worked with actuary Michael Guyton, and this recommendation is based upon the city's performance of the annual actuarial services for the city's Tennessee Employees Revised Pension Plan. The fee for this service is arranged between $27,500 and $31,500. This actuarial analysis and report is required each year to provide the city and its auditors with a funding report and government accounting report for the purpose of properly and accurately estimating the city's pension obligations to its retirees. BPS&amp;M has performed the service for the city for a number of years and will once again produce an annual individual benefit statement for all city employees, which is included in this proposal. You may recall my request to you last month for the approval of the GASP-45 and OPEB actuarial valuation. I would point out that this is a separate and distinct requirement than the proposal that I'm asking for your approval for tonight. Finally, once again, this valuation process is required, and I thank you for your consideration of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Questions for Mr. Godwin. Is there a motion?
Will we approve the recommendation? Second.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll, Mr. Crumley.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for adoption a resolution setting the fee for a request for exemption from the weeds and grass ordinance. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor Bragg, the council will recall that it recently passed an ordinance amending the weeds and grass sections of the city code and setting up a new procedure for persons to request exemption, and called for the Board of Zoning Appeals to hear those requests if neighborhood opposition to the request developed. It provided further that there would be a fee without specifying the amount of the fee. The resolution before you tonight proposes to set that fee for the same amount as currently exists for other matters for which BZA hearings, which need to be publicly advertised in the newspaper, are set at $250, and proposes to refund that fee in half if no public advertisement is required. So the applicant would submit the 250 when submitting the application, but would get half of it back if there was no ad. This has been reviewed with the Planning Director and the Codes Director and its staff's recommendation to you to adopt the resolution.
Any questions from the council regarding this resolution?
I move to approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll, Mr. Crumley.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Are there any beer permit requests, Mr. Crumley?
Mayor, we have two beer permits for your consideration tonight. First is an ownership change of a convenience market at 1121 Bradyville Pike. The second is a special event application from the Middle Tennessee State University Alumni Association for 1124 Rucker Lane.
These meet the requirements?
Both are complete and meet the requirements.
All right. Is there a motion we accept?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time you have before you a revised list of the statements to be considered for payment, and any questions regarding the bills to be paid, or is there a motion to pay the bills?
Move that we pay the bills. Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I'd like to recommend to you the following board and commission reappointments to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Logan Hickerson, Michael Picklesheimer, Carolyn Lester, Michael Hudson, and to the Risk Management Committee, Sean A. Johnson, and Councilmember Toby Gilli. I make these recommendations to you.
Move we approve the mayor's recommendation. Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bradshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.